Well, welcome. We're in the middle of the silly season. This year, we're really fortunate that we have seven people who have stepped up and said, "Put me in, Coach. I want to help." And Willie and John may get mad at me, but to me, the school committee is the most important position in this town. You know, anybody who's had children by junior, senior year, I was lucky to get an hour or two a night. The school committee is going to dictate six to seven hours a day of what our children are exposed to and how we approach their education. So, please, stay tuned to the election, get to know your candidates. I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate. I've always made the commitment, that's not my place, but I'll beg you to vote. So tonight, we're going to learn about one particular person who has stood up and said, "I want to help the community." So let's start with an introduction.
Thank you very much. My name is Chris Wilson. I'm a president here of Milford, and I am running for one of the three seats for Milford School Committee.
Chris, I always start and end the show with a basic question. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Thank you. Great question. Easiest thing, easiest answer to that is, I have kids in the school system. So I want the school system to be as best it can be for my two children that are in the school system. Beyond that, too, I have an inherent interest just in town, in giving back to the town. So I'm a town meeting member. I'm on the Community Use Board. I've also served on the school councils for Brookside, for Woodland, and for Stacey. So I've always been involved in my child's education, more so than just helping out and with homework, but to be a part, to be able to talk to the staff, be able to talk to the principals and the administration, and be a part of not only the day-to-day of what's going on, but how to work on their school improvement plans and, you know, enhance the education process of not only my children, but my friends' children.
So, Milford, small town.
Yes.
We'd like to know about you. Tell us about your family.
So, originally born and raised in Southern Maine, in a town that, very similar to Milford, demographic-wise, a town of 25,000 people. Went to college in Boston, and so therefore just kind of remained in the Massachusetts area.
In Boston?
In Boston, yes. I went to Northeastern University, where I got a mechanical engineering degree. And at school, met a lovely girl named Kathy, and we got married and have since kind of, we located in a few different towns around Massachusetts area. And then a piece of real estate came up in Milford, Mass. Had them to ask around to a few people, and they said, "Yeah, Milford's a nice little upcoming town. I think it'll be a great place to start, to, you know, kind of set roots." And here we are, 18 years later, with roots in the ground. So we recently just bought a new home in Milford, so we certainly have extended our time here. And we have two children. We have Ryan, who's an eighth grader at Stacy Middle School, and my daughter Kaylee, who's a sixth grader at Stacy Middle School.
So basically, your family's Milford.
We are. I definitely consider myself Milford.
As I say, at this point, whether you fit the definition of how many generations, and do you live near your mother, to be, you know, a traditional Milfordian.
Right.
To me, if you brought your kids up here.
Yes.
You know, I was born in Milford. I didn't have a choice.
Yep.
You know, I didn't opt in, but my hat is always off to families who decide, "This is where I want to plant roots."
Yeah.
And now with, you know, and two kids that have grown up.
Right.
In Milford, and they're in schools in Milford.
Correct.
Kind of, you're stuck here now.
It's okay. I'm all right with that. Like you said, and it's very similar to the town that I grew up in, you know, so we enjoy it. There's a lot of similarities, so, you know, I enjoyed my upbringing in Southern Maine, and I can kind of relate, you know, the town of Bedford, Maine, where I grew up, to the town of Milford. So I enjoy it, and I want my kids to have that similar upbringing.
So, we're going to have a monumental shift.
Yes.
In the school committee. You know, the world of the school committee is the world of four.
Yes.
You know, getting anything done, you need four votes out of seven. So every year, we normally have one or two that change. Sometimes, you don't. This year, we're going to have three new members.
Three new members, yes.
If you get elected, what will be your first action item?
I think the first thing is easy to say is the current high school, Level III, where we want to bring that back up to a Level II, and ultimately to the Level I. So I think that is the first priority, not on the current school committee, but just around town, too, speaking with people. And I think that is of great concern to people, that, you know, to hear that the high school is at a Level III, that it's performing in the lowest 20th percentile among the state, that's very concerning, especially when you have a son and a daughter. My son's on the cusp of going to that school, and my daughter's right on his heels, too, you know, has a couple more years. So I think it's going to be very important to define why we're at Level III, and set a pathway of how to achieve back to that Level I status, that we know we can achieve not only for our students and our community.
Somebody says, "Why are you sending your children to Milford High?" How would you answer?
I think, just as we were talking before, is, you know, my roots have now become, are in Milford. They've both started at Shining Star Preschool, and they've progressed up through every school system. And along the way, they've had a great education process. Certainly not without bumps in the road at certain times, but I think the communication back and forth with the different staff members has always been back and forth. So we've been able to adjust to those bumps in the road. So certainly, my kind of opinion on the Milford school system is a positive one. Both my children, I feel, are on a very good learning curve. They are achieving different aspects of education that I'm very happy with. So certainly, I would continue on. So Milford High School, to them, is the next step, and, but I want them to be able to have a school system that is performing at its highest level.
So now, if you had your chance to pick one program that you would focus on to improve, any ideas what that would be yet?
I think right now, one of the biggest factors that's hurting our testing scores is the ELL population and the special needs population. And it's not necessarily that we're not putting our best foot forward for those two populations. They're just, they're at a, I guess, in a sense, a somewhat disadvantage than maybe a typical developing child. So we need to keep those resources going to progress them up from where they may need some more support systems, and be able to bring them up to that same, what we define as a typically developing child.
How do you think that affects our testing scores, though?
So certainly, so I can relate to my son, who is on an IEP, and has been throughout his education process through Milford. And there are certain aspects of learning that are just more difficult for him. So we have those supports in place through the IEP, and we try to set achievable goals, or we have set achievable goals throughout the process. And we've worked on those support systems and have achieved those goals and keep writing new goals. So I think it's to define what those goals are for children that are not testing well, and to define those goals, set forth an individualized education process, per se, for them, not necessarily that they would qualify for an IEP, but to use that as a term to define those goals and to help to, you know, kind of steer them to become better at that test.
Now, you have certain people who've voiced their opinion, saying, "Our special needs programs and ELL programs bring a lot of special needs and ELL kids, and they hurt our ability to teach to the highest level." How would you answer that?
I think it's a difficult question, because everybody's got a very strong opinion about how an ELL population is going to affect, you know, a student that is not ELL. But the ELL population, it's here. We are, we're going to assist everybody that comes to the Milford school system, and we want everybody that comes into the Milford school system to be able to achieve at the highest level. So what would I say to that person is, "Let's catch the ELL population as early as possible, put the resources towards the ELL population." So now, they basically are no longer an ELL population. They are part of the general ed population, and then by the time they do get into high school, you know, they are, again, they're general ed, and those numbers, we would see a higher ELL population maybe in the lower levels of school, lower grade levels of school, and then by the time they're getting into ninth, 10th, 11th grade, it would drop down.
If I had an advanced student, should I be worried that they won't get all the educational support they need?
No, certainly not. And I think that, you know, I look at both my children, and one side, that my son, who does get some of the extra help, and on the other side, that my daughter, who, again, categorizes into the typically developing student. She's doing very well in school. She hasn't ever come home from school and said, "Jeez, you know, my teacher had to leave the classroom to, you know, work with certain kids," or "My teacher's never directly teaching me." So I use her as kind of that litmus test of how things have been progressing for her up to the sixth grade point. And, you know, again, she has, always reports back to me that all her teachers have been very good and very, you know, very attentive to her needs, too. Not only the, you know, not only to children in the classroom that may need a little bit more attention.
You know, it's interesting, because my daughter teaches special needs.
Okay.
The Bistro Program. And when I've asked her, it was interesting. She said, "Dad, my job as an educator is to make sure that every child reaches their potential, and if I'm lucky, a little bit more." Not all kids have the same potential, but if I can get them to their best levels and feel good about themselves, then I've done my job.
Right.
You know, and when I look at the top 10%, pretty proud of the schools they're getting into.
Definitely.
You know, I mean, you see people being Huskies, being at Northeastern, people going to Ivy Leagues, even those other, that other Jesuit school in Boston, you know, in Holy Cross in Worcester.
Yes.
I feel really good that our top kids perform as good or better than the kids, the top kids in any town around us.
Certainly.
But when they average the scores, I think that's where, I mean, this year, Josh, at the high school, finally addressed the fact that we have two populations, and we do well if you categorize them within each.
Correct.
But when you try and normalize it into an average, then the numbers don't look so good.
In a sense, it could be skewed. You're right. Very correct. And it's hard to, to, you know, everybody that's looking at test scores, it's all, again, brought together, and that's what's the, it's looking at it from a general standpoint. But ultimately, we do have those two populations. So the one population that we feel are going to, you know, the Ivy League schools, are we doing the best for them to make sure they're continuing on and have the best education process? And then the ones that we are striving to get to the Ivy League schools, we want to make sure that they have the same best education process. So it's certainly, you know, it's a tough dynamic to try to explain, but it's certainly something that, from the school committee side of it, you've got to fully understand in how that, what, you know, the education budget, how do you maintain that and put it forward to best help every student out there?
Now, are you familiar with the Chromebook Initiative?
Yes.
We put in substantial amount of money.
Correct.
Unbudgeted.
Yes.
I mean, you know, for the first year, we had to stand up and say, "Oops, we made a mistake. We forgot the kids coming out of Woodland."
Yes.
All have been Chromebooked.
Yes.
And then they'd hit Stacy, and we give them stone tablets.
Correct.
I'm being facetious, but...
Back to paper and pencil, yes.
Back to, you know, analog technology. So we put in $600,000.
Yes.
What's your opinion on the Chromebook Initiative?
Well, I voted to approve it at a town meeting, so I think that's easier. I felt that it was in the best interest for our students. So certainly, that, I saw it implemented at Woodland School with my daughter, and then I've seen it transition up into Stacy. And I think it's been great to help my kids learn. It certainly has reduced paper, overall, which I think is a big deal, whether you're, you know, from the environmental side and from a cost side of it, too. You know, I think if you look at, again, back to the budget and what we're saving on just papers going home every day, it's a big, you know, a big line item that is going to be reduced down budget-wise. Now, Chromebooks obviously have, are expensive themselves to, you know, the initial buy, but from an education side, I think it's helped. You know, I use a computer all day long at work. Most people are on computers, whether it's a regular laptop, or their iPhones, or things of that sort. So we're in a technology-driven world, and the education process is becoming more and more technology-driven. So certainly, it's keeping up to speed with technology, with life. So I think it's important for our kids to understand how to navigate through and use a computer, and how to be able to utilize that as a, you know, an efficient skill from there, as they learn.
Now, you're a town meeting member.
Yes.
So you've been involved in voting on every budget item there is.
Yes, for the last few years, yes.
At the end of the day, every dollar spent in this town has to go through town meeting.
Correct.
I mean, everybody jokes about the FinCom, and I've always said they're the most influential, powerless people, because they have no power, no vote.
Right.
Think the whole FinCom, 15 of them get one vote.
Yes.
One out of 200 and some. But how do you feel about the balance? We're about 62% of our expenditures.
Yep.
And of course, Kevin and crew will say they're less, but when you factor in health care costs.
Right.
The mortgages on the new buildings, it comes out about 60-odd percent.
Correct.
Good balance, bad balance?
Well, I think you've got to look at it from a per-student ratio, right? We're at, what, $13,500 per student, if I recall, per year, which is right around that state average. So we are, you know, we're average, right, from that standpoint? So if you, as you look at the 4,200 students that are within the school system, and that $13,000, and then again, from the infrastructure and Chromebooks, you know, to just papers and pencils and things of that sort, and, you know, what the teachers are going to need to teach our children, yes, $60 million is a daunting amount per year, but ultimately, breaking it down, you know, we are where, we're consistent with the state. And I think it's important to be that way, to be able to educate our children in the best we can.
But personally, I don't care about the state. I care about Milford.
Correct.
So I'll put you on the spot.
Sure.
Are we doing the right thing for our kids, regardless of what the state says?
Yes. I would have to say yes, just based, you know, based off of how my children are doing, and based off of how my friends' children are doing. I mean, certainly, you know, when you have kids that are school age, you're not always just talking about things outside of school. You know, the conversation definitely rolls back into school, and how, you know, how's your child doing? How's he like this teacher? How does she like that teacher? So certainly, from what my feedback is from other parents that I socialize with, is they also have good opinions about the school system.
The great normalizer, the soccer field.
Exactly. Certainly, yeah.
Now, from a facilities point of view.
Yes.
And you've been town meeting member, you know we have these debates of Middle School leased, and we just finished paying down Woodland.
Yes.
How do you think we're doing on it facility-wise?
I mean, certainly, you know, Brookside was renovated years ago, and it's still in very, you know, it's a very nice school. I've seen, obviously, the new Woodland School be built. My daughter was able to go for one year there as a fifth grader, so we, you know, she was able to enjoy the...
Yeah, my daughter keeps complaining that she would love to have the ability, you know, with the breakout classrooms and...
Right, exactly.
The airiness of Woodland.
Yes, it's certainly, it's of the new standards, and to help teachers teach in different, you know, in a better environment. But certainly, those schools, Stacy Middle School, you know, going through that, it seems, you know, it's a, it's a nice school. Obviously, it's of an old architecture, but certainly has the ability to house the students properly. Now, you get to the high school, which is probably one of the older schools within the town, and I would say...
Probably?
Yeah. So I would say that's, or I do say that would be the next on the list, is if I were on school committee, to start looking at that and to ensure that we are, you know, taking a long, hard look at the infrastructure around Milford High School to ensure that it's in the best, in the best interest for our children, you know? And how do we make sure, what would be the best plan moving forward, to update it? You know, not just from an architectural side of it, from the exterior, but from the interior side, to ensure that we have the best learning environment for our children, from, not only from math and history or English, whether in the general classrooms, but also, you know, STEAM has now become a big push in sciences and things of that sort. So to make sure that those teachers have the right resources within the classroom environment, to be able to teach their kids beyond just books, that they can do experiments and get their students to be able to do more hands-on work.
Now, I'm a bit prejudiced, because I was, class of '74, the first class out of that old building.
Okay.
I look at the building, and I say, "It's a bunker."
Yes.
I don't think there's anything wrong with the infrastructure.
Yep.
But, you know, we've been talking about somewhere eight to 10 years from now, renovating the whole school.
Okay.
It seems to be the next one on the list.
Correct.
A lot of people have talked about, you can't build a new high school. There's just no place to put, when we did Brookside, as you mentioned, we built half a school between what we did at the high school, what we did at Memorial, and that was for 300 kids. I can't imagine 1,200, how we could temporarily house them. But people have talked about adding a wing, you know, moving kids from A Wing into the new wing, and then B Wing into A Wing, and do it in phases.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, also taking care of our athletes by doing a proper fieldhouse.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that would fit your vision of where we should go?
Definitely. I can actually revert back to Bedford High School, where I went to high school, when, again, it was a similar scenario, where it was a very older school, and they were able to renovate it to a state-of-the-art school while still having students within the confines of the building. So again, you're doing a lot of shifting, so you're, you know, it's a lot of scheduling, you know, dancing around, and things of that sort. So certainly, I think, when you look at how the construction process could work, you can certainly renovate a school such as that, that is a bunker, that has a solid foundation, but certainly, you know, bring the interior up to, you know, newer standards and to help, you know, again, help the learning process overall.
And I worry, because the new standards that the state's funding, square footage per student, we'd have to shrink the high school.
Okay, yeah.
And I can't imagine we'd want to do that.
Correct. I mean, you certainly, you want, especially high school-age kids, enough room to be able to maneuver through. You know, there's much more classroom changes going on, and, you know, and it's the flow of traffic, student body going up and down the halls. You know, you certainly want to be able to let them kind of get that four minutes of decompression time from one class to another, so...
Forty-some years ago, we graduated 222 students. That was the first class out of there. Last year, we graduated 260, or, you're adding less than one child per year.
Correct.
Why do we need more space?
That's a tough, obviously a tough question, especially, like, when you look at what the state's saying, that for your minimum square footage, you're, you know, square footage per child. But I think when you look at what, you know, what other programs that we want to add in beyond just the, you know, math, English, social studies, and sciences, and, you know, we get into more STEAM, we're getting into more vocational programs that technically might not be offered, you know, at Milford High School. So how are we going to educate children in other vocational needs that, of their interests? That requires more space.
I think that's the key, is what we're asking of our children.
Right.
We didn't have a computer lab. We didn't have all the requirements that the kids need today.
Yeah.
But you bring up some good topics, because vocational programs. When we graduated Milford High, if you were going to college, you were at Milford High.
Correct.
If you weren't college-bound, but you wanted to learn a trade, you went to Blackstone Valley.
Right.
And I always bring up, personally, my father. He came over from Portugal, and he had his four years of education that they got back in the villages, and that's all they got. Put him in organic chemistry, he would not do well. He was not an academician. However, give him a tool, the man was an artist. And I worry that to get into Blackstone Valley today, and I'm not taking anything away from Dr. Fitzpatrick, Michael has done a phenomenal job, but you almost have to be in the top 10% of your class academically to be selected. What would you do for people like my father, who comes to school, great with his hands, but he can't get into BVT? Now what do we do with them?
All right. So now we've got to look at programs within the Milford school system that don't contradict with Blackstone Valley. Certainly, you know, they are, you know, a great school system, and as you were saying, yeah, they are, you know, they have a very high graduation rate going on to colleges. So certainly, they're there, they've become a very great entity for a very, in a sense, a select group of students. So the ones, the students that feel that they just don't want to go there for one reason or another, and want to stay in Milford, yeah, how do we provide programs for them?
But I want to be a tradesman.
Right.
I want to learn how to be a carpenter and electrician.
Yep. I think we have to start expanding and looking at programs, again, that are going to be in the best interest of our students, without contradicting things over at BVT.
Any ideas?
Always have great ideas for, for, you know, again, as a mechanical engineer, you know, I enjoy working with my hands, so certainly would love to see any type of building trade programs, whether it's, you know, anywhere from masonry to carpentry to CNC program. Again, there's a lot of programs that are offered at BVT, so we'd have to be very careful on how we look, you know, again, how we address programs from the vocational side here. You know, the, just drew a blank on the name of the hospitality program. Again, it's a program that was implemented, and it's gotten some pretty good traction through the school system, and, you know, it's been a good program for a group of students that enjoy that type of work. So how, you know, it's starting to, I guess, really look at the student population and survey the student population to understand what are the driving needs of our students right now, and try to find ways of creating programs that are going to help them and ultimately benefit them by the time they are in the 12th grade and graduating.
Now, the six people who've watched our show know that I challenged our superintendent, because I happen to have gone through the science wing. And at first, it was like, wow, I feel right at home. This looks just like it did when I was here. Then I thought, wow, it looks just like it was when I was here. Now, there's some computers and things, but today, life sciences, biotech, biopharma, medical devices are driving...
Yes.
...the economy here in Massachusetts. Why is it that somebody from the school committee hasn't gotten up and said, "I challenged this town to put a program together and really drive," I guess we call it STEAM, but the old was STEM.
Right, exactly. You know? I guess, has anybody ever gotten up for invitation to speak, to make it noted to our school committee? Whether it's someone like yourself that, you know, should be up in front of school committee and say, "Hey, this is what I saw," or is it a staff member? Is it the teachers that's, you know, are going to their department heads and saying, "Listen, we really need to upgrade that." So I think it boils down to communication. You know, is it important for a school committee member to also walk through the school system? Certainly. They should start right at Shining Star and progress through, and just have a good understanding of what's going on from the infrastructure side of the schools, because that's also part of what the responsibility level will be for a school committee member. So certainly, it's, you know, I guess you could say, if there was a blame game, it's, you want the communication level to be from the faculty, and then be able to come up to the school committee level, but also the school committee people, personnel, need to be able to walk through the schools and have an understanding of what's up to date, what's a little bit archaic, and how can we budget to take it back, again, up from archaic to, up to, you know, today's standards.
Well, and again, as I think... Well, you know, and again, as I think through the whole program, we just finished an athletic project. When I say we finished, FinCom. Parks Department came to us four and a half years ago. Wanted to build a new field up on Route one forty. It's going to cost us a little over two million dollars. As part of the capital committee, we looked and said, we're just paying off five million for the youth center. Can't come up with two. So we made an agreement that each year we would put away two hundred thousand dollars if we had a surplus till we got to a million dollars.
Yes.
Then we'd set the Parks Department loose and say, go turf a field. In October, we hit the number.
Correct.
And it was always agreed, excuse me, that if we didn't have a surplus big enough, we wouldn't fund it that year. So it was never, we're going to do it in four years or five. Really was, we'll put two hundred thousand away every year we can. When we get to a million, we're there, you're free, go.
Right.
It's going to be a million too by now. But I'm wondering, why wouldn't we take the same approach? Something is critical.
Right.
You know, if the town of Milford, if Town Meeting will agree to putting away a couple hundred thousand a year. And don't get me wrong, I think fields are important.
Right.
The athletic programs in Milford are no more or no less important than a lot of the academic programs.
Certainly.
So again, as a potential new school committee member, why wouldn't you stand up? And if STEM's the wrong program, but as an ME, you probably do like.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, certainly. And, and again, you know, from your, your stance or, excuse me, your involvement on, on the finance committee, certainly that would be a conversation that we would have to have. That, all right, you know, I've walked through the science wing. We, we, there is some, some very old equipment. We need to upgrade this. I'm not saying that we need to upgrade it tomorrow. But can, again, can we start looking at from a budgetary side of things to either, do we, you know, do we put a little bit of money at it every year? Is it, you know, ten thousand dollars every year? Or do we hold that money aside and be able to, you know, gain a fund and be able to collectively go through and renovate at a science wing? So what would be the best avenue? And I think, you know, talking to finance committee, talking to the teachers themselves of what their needs are would be a very important part of the process to, to understand, again, is it, you know, is it a, a complete renovation? Or is it, do we, are we slowly, you know, increasing or, or, or working with the equipment that's there and improving that equipment? So certainly either avenue, I think, would be beneficial.
If we had a plan, and I'll challenge you again saying, when we did Brookside, all the way up to Middle School East, we had a long-range educational plan. And right, wrong or indifferent, we stuck to it. And we renovated schools and, you know, everybody kept saying, why are you building up the stabilization account? We kept saying, there's a school coming. And I'm really proud that when Woodland came, we had the money put aside and we didn't have to go for profanity, like two and a half override word or.
Right, exactly.
We don't have a long-range plan. We've been pushing Kevin and the school committee.
Yes.
Saying, okay, guys, it's been enough time.
Yeah, it's going to be very, very important for the next three people that, that, you know, fill those three school committee seats to be able to, to work with the four that are on there and, and understand, right, where are you guys at in this process? Which obviously doesn't sound like, you know, they're at a, they're at a very ground floor level with that long-term plan. So how do we move it forward? What's the timeline, you know, that's going to be best for the committee? It's going to be best for the school department and it's going to be best for the town. So make achievable goals, set forth an achievable budget. And then again, go, go forth amongst the town and say, and here's the plan. You know, get the feedback, you know, get the support from, from, from FinCom and then ultimately from Town Meeting, you know, who would ultimately vote for those improvements. So again, it's, it's getting together as that committee. There's seven people that are going to need to, to get into a room, formulate a plan together and, and understand what that plan is, what the timeline and what's the budget.
And again, I think a lot of us as residents want to support the plan. But candidly, it's like, what was the old lady, where's the beef?
Right, well, you need the plan.
I need the plan.
You need the plan to support.
You know, come forward with a plan because you got very good people, very educated, smart, intelligent people on the school committee. And it's like, okay, I learned years ago from a CEO and he said, two reasonable people equally informed seldom disagree. The key is being equally informed.
Right.
And I think a lot of us, do we see that plan? I mean, there were parts of that long-range ed plan that I wasn't overly happy with, but on balance, there were compromises and.
Of course.
We went with it and we got behind the long-range ed plan. Will you push for a long-range ed plan in this lifetime?
Yes, one hundred percent. It's important and it's, it's important, I think, when you look at the high school being at level three right now. Is that part of the reason how we kind of, did we lose traction? Because we didn't have that long-range ed plan and that's how we kind of dropped into the level three? I'm just, you know, more of an opinion, I don't know. So I think, you know, from my side of it, from a school committee member, yes, I need to get in there. I need to dive in headfirst to fully understand where are we at, where we're at right now. In a sense, how did we drop down there? But how do we dig ourselves back out of this hole that we've created? And, and to be able to get back up to that level one status.
Who do you see, if I was to ask you for the biggest challenges? You know, are there three big challenges you think you'll be facing as school committee member?
I think, yes, I think obviously getting the high school back up to the level one status that it deserves. That's going to be the, I think, one of the first big challenges as you, as we were just talking about, you know, coming up with that long-range plan and to ensure that it is a, a true long-range plan that, you know, that the entire school system is behind the long-range plan. And then I think ultimately every year you deal with budgets. You know, I think that's going to be one of the toughest ones because it costs, every year it costs more and more to educate our children, right? From, from many aspects within, you know, the, the, the infrastructure that is required to, to teach our children, you know, from, from teachers to the buildings, to the paper and pencils, to the Chromebooks, things of that sort. So I think it's always looking at that budget with a fine-tooth comb and understanding what programs are the most efficient for our children. What needs to be looked at to address, to, to help the efficiency level? I'm not saying that would, anything needs to be cut or, or added or things of that sort. But from the current budget and the current programs, what do we need to do to make it the best educational process for our kids? So again, you know, again, it goes a lot back to, I think, with the budget and ensuring that, you know, the budget, which is again, sixty percent of the town budget, is in the best interest of the children of, of the community that go to school, but is also in the best interest of the taxpayers that ultimately at Town Meeting members are going to have to vote for it. So to be able to justify every line item within a town, within a school budget to be able to present. And if someone has questions, to be able to understand what those line items mean and be able to speak to it and justify why we need certain amount of monies for certain programs.
Now, you've been privy as a Town Meeting member, you see the budgets come up.
Yes.
We've always broken up the school budget
Yes.
into four pieces. Medical benefits, which we pay on the town side.
Yes.
Because, again, the budget goes up six, seven percent in a year. The school committee doesn't stand a prayer of absorbing that. I call it mortgages because, you know, we just bought a new sixty million dollar school.
Right.
We got to pay the mortgage, the bonds. But then there's the two pieces that we always talk to the school committee about. One is operational budgets. And for twelve years, it's been two point something percent.
Correct.
And it floats up and down. And then we have ELL and SPED
Right.
broken out separately.
Yes.
And that, every year we just take a tally.
Right.
And say, okay, what is SPED and ELL costing this year versus last year? I mean, this previous year, we had to put in an extra six hundred thousand dollars to SPED and ELL.
Right.
A lot of towns don't make that distinction. They tell the school committee, okay, this is it.
Right.
This is how much you got.
Right.
And if SPED goes up by six hundred, you're taking it out of typical budget.
Exactly.
How do you feel about our budgeting process?
I think that's a great way of doing it because again, it makes sure that every, all the four different aspects are subdivided, right? And that the, the taxpayer understands where their money's going to and you can look at each one kind of from an individual standpoint. You know, when you look at IEPs, you know, that is a basically a, a form, you know, or a document that is letter of the law. It's, it's a, it's a binding agreement between, you know, the school and the, and that child that they are going to provide these specific services for that child to be able to, you know, have the, the best education process. So that I think is something that, it's important to keep it to the side. It, it's probably going to increase every year from the standpoint.
Eleven out of twelve years.
Right. You know, it's ever increasing, the, the needs of that, of that child are ever increasing per se or, or budgetary wise. But I can speak to that from the standpoint of, you know, my son, when he started at Shining Star, was in the NECC program, which transitioned into the Milestones program. And has since transitioned out of the Milestones program into, in a sense, the general ed environment. So I think it's important to look back at the process from him. He's a, you know, in a sense, a bullet point, data, data point. But if you look at, at my son, who was again, part of, has been part of an IEP process and had all of that, the extra help, you know, from, from staff when it first, when he first began in school and now has transitioned and has, you know, achieved goals through the IEP process. And now is, in a sense, is be, is in a general ed classroom. It's a success story overall from the Milford School Department, I would, I would have to say. So, you know, it's important, again, back to the budget wise, without losing sight of that, that yes, it's, you know, you can look at your special education budget and you can say that you need it there and it's going to be successful. Looking at it from the ELL side, again, you could say this, you could use that same kind of argument that, or, or, or progression per se, that it's very important to be able to pinpoint the ELL students, give them the resources that they need to be able to transition from a ELL population into a general ed population. Now you get over to the next tier, which you're saying is that general ed population. And we always want to make sure that we're doing our best for the general ed population. You know, we, I always say like, I want that C student to be the B student. I want the B student to be the A student. I want that A student.
To be the Nobel Prize winner.
Yeah, exactly. So I think it's, it's important. You've, you've got such diversity across the entire school system. Or even if you took one grade level, a sixth grade where my daughter's at, you're going to have IEP students, you're going to have ELL students, you're going to have general ed students. So, and you have the teachers that need to be able to teach to all of that.
In your mind, are we taking care of our special needs kids because it's law? Or be, and I'll admit, I've said it publicly, I really don't need Beacon Hill or Washington to tell me how to take care of Milford kids.
Right.
We always take care of Milford kids because they're our kids.
Yeah. Is special education doing a good job? Yes. I don't think they'd be in special education if they didn't care for the kids. And I think that's the easiest answer to that. I think every teacher that I've ever had a, had a talk with, conversation with, they're, they are part of the special education process because they care for the kids. And they enjoy teaching and they enjoy seeing the success of kids that are on IEPs. So I think, you know, from that standpoint, yeah, there's, there's no question in my mind that, you know, they're putting their best foot forward for every student that's out there.
Yeah, and again, Milford's Town Meeting has never not taken care of our kids.
Correct.
Yeah, I feel very proud that over the years, Town Meeting's always come through with rational decisions. But I've never seen them short our kids.
Right. I think it's important too, by the time we get to Town Meeting, that we've, we've had a lot of back and forth between, you know, the, the department heads to the principals, to the superintendent's office, to the school committee and the school committee with FinCom. So I think at that point, there is a lot of discussion going on, a lot of communication. So that way, by the time it does get to the floor, the voting floor of Town Meeting, that the Town Meeting members are comfortable and understand that, listen, this, this whole budgetary process has been vetted through. You know, we've, we've, we've argued about different line items, which I think is going to be important too. You know, that I, I want to be challenged by FinCom on different line items. I think it's important, it's healthy for everybody to be able to understand. And I want to be able to go through and defend specific programs that are going to be on the budget to a FinCom member that may say, we don't need this. Yes, we do, and here's why. So to be able to speak intelligently and understand those programs. So again, by the time it does get to Town Meeting, you know, I can go up to Town Meeting and I can present a sixty million dollar budget, that's sixty percent of the town budget, and feel confident that the taxpayers of Milford, their dollar is being spent in, you know, in a justified way.
And it's always funny because I've had so many people come to me and say, oh, Town Meeting, it just, you never discuss anything, you never argue, it's all one group. And I shake my head and say, you haven't been around for the five months before that.
Right, exactly. It's not, get your pamphlet with all your articles and warrants and show up and read a quick blurb. You know, maybe some people do. And that's unfortunate, but you need to go in educated on every town article that you're going to vote on that night. And I think it's important to, to educate yourself before you have that voting process.
Yeah, we're going through the, the normal mating ritual now where Kevin and Joe will say, oh, we need ninety-nine million.
Yes.
And the FinCom will say, well, we're broke.
Yes.
Somewhere in the middle, it'll come out two point something percent on the operational.
Right.
What is SPED and ELL net-net?
Right.
And we'll take care of our mortgages because we've already bought the buildings.
Correct.
And we have to buy healthcare at the best price, but, I mean, when was the last time it went up two percent? So.
Yeah, there's going to be big gains.
There's going to be big expenses. And somehow we'll put it all together.
Right.
And we'll go to Town Meeting and we'll all agree and seem, you know, kumbaya, we're all in agreement. But the knock-down bloody fights beforehand.
Right. Well, I've been to Town Meeting where, where people have argued for an hour over fifty thousand dollars on certain articles. So again, is Town Meeting a, a healthy environment to debate? Certainly it is. I think, again, it's just understanding and being educated on what you're voting for. So certainly sixty-plus million dollars is a very daunting amount to fully educate yourself on too. So I think it's going to be very important for school committee members to, to be able to educate everybody collectively in the Milford, you know, community. Here's what's coming up, you know, for Town Meeting. This is why the budget is, is what it is. This is, you know, again, the, the SPED and the ELL had to grow this amount because of the, the criterias that we had to meet for these students. The general ed population, you know, we needed to implement certain programs. We needed new Chromebooks. We needed additional staffing.
Again, that's why I say realistically, we can hide behind and rationalize, oh, the state says we must. State never said we had to spend six hundred thousand on Chromebooks.
Right.
School Committee made a very convincing argument on why we should and it's better for our children.
Exactly.
Town Meeting voted yes.
Yes.
Yeah, to me, that's the ultimate.
Yeah, we have forty-two hundred customers that we're dealing with.
Well, and somebody says, how many children do you have? Forty-two hundred.
Right.
They're all Milford kids.
Yep.
You know? None of them are more special or less special than any of the others.
Right.
Now, you mentioned diversity.
Yes.
That's been a hot topic. I mean, we always joke up at the heights because when we grew up, we were too busy living diversity to know it was in vogue. But a lot of parents have feelings about how diverse a population Milford has. What would you say to them?
I think it's a good thing. I think you, when I look at my job every day and the diversity of, of my customer base and who I'm speaking with on, on a day-to-day basis, it's important to understand that it's a very, it's a global economy. It's not the same economy as it was ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. That, you know, it, it's not uncommon for me to speak with a vendor that is overseas that I've got to communicate with. So to understand how other cultures work, to understand how to communicate within other cultures is a very positive thing. So if anything, it's, it's helping prepare our children for the, for their future to be able to understand and, and, you know, understand cultures, I think. I think, you know, Woodland last year, or the year before, had a cultural event, and I think all the kids really enjoyed going and showing off their cultures, and also other students being able to go and understand their cultures. So ultimately, I think you've got to look at it from a standpoint of, we're a global economy, we're a very, we're, America is more, is becoming more and more diverse, so it's important to have our children be part of that diversity, as opposed to all of a sudden, they graduate from Milford High School, you know, at 18 years old, and they go out into the real world or whatever, and it's a shock, right? You don't want to shock anybody, you want to just, you know, kind of, it's part of the process.
Isn't it amazing at that cultural event? I mean, if you were to say, "What are the cultures in Milford? Italian, Irish, Portuguese, Brazilian, Ecuadorian?" We've got five.
Yep.
And then say, "How about the other 20?"
Exactly.
I was amazed. I didn't know how lucky we were to be represented in town by over 20 different nations, 20 different cultures.
Exactly. And I think the kids, again, they enjoy it, they enjoy seeing a part of it, and, you know, it's, they're being taught in social studies, right? So now they actually can see projects being developed by students whose heritage is what they're studying in school. So not just seeing it and reading it in a textbook, they're actually can speak to a family, I think, that has roots, you know, or, you know, yeah, has roots in another community that can come in and kind of teach to that too. So I think it's important for everybody to understand it.
So now, if somebody was to ask, "I'm considering moving to Milford. I have children. How do I get the best education for my kids?" How would you address that?
I think Milford school systems have been a good school system, you know, a very positive school system for both my kids. So I think you do, you talk to other people from neighboring communities, and they may have a certain predisposition about the Milford school systems, but I can talk to how the Milford school systems have educated my children and how the whole process has gone, and how it's educated my friends' children. And then again, it's been a positive influence to their education process. They've done very well in the Milford school systems, they've tested well in the Milford school systems, things of that nature. So I think I could, I would just encourage a newcomer to the school system that don't believe everything you hear from a predisposition standpoint of an outsider. Understand what you're truly getting from the Milford school system, that there are a lot of staff members that are here to educate our children, they're positive, they want to be part of the education process. And I would say that the best thing too is stay involved in the schools also. Don't just drop your son or daughter off at the schools or put them on the bus, that. Communicate with your teachers, you know, it's very easy to have emails back and forth with your teachers. So understand, you know, open the school bag up at the end of the day.
But it's so easy to say, "Get involved." You know, when I came to bring my daughter to Milford, I asked Jose Vera, back then the principal of Brookside, "How do I get the best for my daughter?" And he said, "Get involved." It's always easy to talk about it.
Right.
But now I see that you've been involved in three different school...
Three different schools, community use.
And three different school councils.
And also the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, so I'm the vice chair for that.
Oh!
So...
But tell me about school council.
Mm-hmm.
What did you get out of that?
I think it gave me that direct connection to faculty and staff members that were there, and you understood what was going on, a better understanding of what was going on day-to-day. You understood the different, or heard about, listened to the different events that were going on within the school. It was very important to me to find out how the professional development process was for the teachers. So when we, when our children have a day off or a half day, and, you know, we're trying, everybody's scrambling around finding childcare because we have full-time jobs and they're going to this friend's or that friend's and things of that sort, to fully understand what is happening, again, the teachers aren't going home, the teachers are staying there, they're educating themselves, and they're becoming better teachers for our children. So by being on school council, you hear about these events that are going on, and you're, you've got that direct conversation with the principal. Now, every year, we also look at student handbooks, and you're also looking at the school improvement policy. So those are very big kind of documents that you're working within, with parents, community members, and staff members, to pinpoint areas that the school, that they want to improve on, that the community would like to see improved on, and coming up with those bullet points, coming up with how we're going to achieve those goals and get there. So I think it was important for me to understand it from a school level, how are we improving this one school, and how is it going to cascade up to the other schools?
So as we're coming to the end, Chris, I'm from Milford.
Yes.
Why would I vote for you?
You know, thank you for that last question. I stumble because there's so much that I want to do for the school system, and I think, again, ultimately, it's because my children are in the school system, so I want the school system to be the best it can for them, for all their friends, for all my friends' children.
For all 4,200 of our kids.
For 4,200 of the kids. You know, I've stayed involved in the school systems since my children started at Shining Star. I think I've always been able to have good conversations with various principals and staff members throughout the process. So I've enjoyed being a part of the school system as a parent, and I think, you know, to look at it from a school-based scenario to now looking at it from a more district-wide scenario, it's just something that really interests me. It's giving back to my community and ultimately just, you know, again, being a part of the education process for my kids.
Well, again, as I started the show, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you for having me.
Anybody who's willing to step up and help our kids, I tip my hat and say thank you, and we'll see as we go forward.
Thank you very much.
As always, thank you for joining us, to our six loyal viewers. We really do appreciate that you're taking the time to learn about our candidates. Selectmen are important, all the boards are important, but three people are going to dictate what our children do six hours a day, and what educational policies and programs help them form their long-term visions, aspirations, and performance at colleges and other areas. So please, as I've always promised, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate, but I'll beg you to vote and plead with you, have an educated vote. Take a few minutes, listen to each of the candidates, whether it's on this show or other shows, listen to them. Find out, is this the kind of person who's like me, who has our best interest, our being not only the community, but a balance with the children? And as always, good night, may God bless, and thank you again.